Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Any invocation that may be offered before the official start of the meeting of the Thad County Commissioners shall be at the voluntary offering of a private citizen to and for the benefit of the county commissioners. The views or beliefs expressed by the invocation speaker have not been previously reviewed or approved by the county commissioners and do not necessarily represent the religious beliefs or views of the county commissioners in part or as a whole. No member of the community is required to attend or participate in the invocation, and such decision will have no impact on their right to actively participate in the business of the county commissioners. Mr. Eric Hopkins from growing back branches.
Thank you. Please join me, sir. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you as the God of all times, and we know that the Creator is interested in his creation. Forgive us when unexpected problems distract us from your presence. Help us to understand that in our human nature, we are limited, and when we trust you, it takes those limits off. Today, I thank you for your presence here in this meeting. Thank you for those who are involved, both heading up the head table and those that are here to share issues. I thank you for peace. I thank you, God, for resolve. I thank you most of all for Jesus, and in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Eric. I call this meeting Thad County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand for the elect. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judge Branstadter?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we need to approve the minutes. I'm getting ahead of myself trying to get you out of here. Additions or corrections from the August meeting?
I'm going to do a few minutes. I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The vote approved is offered. Now Judge Branstadter.
Thank you.
Good morning. Here this morning, we recently had a court reporter that left the office to take a job for more pay. So, you know, we understand that completely because these jobs don't pay the most, and we're excited for her to have that opportunity. And then we were also lucky enough to be able to hire someone who was with the Superior Court part-time. So, that worked out well to be able to get someone, and her name's Sierra Urban. We're really excited to have her and think she'll do a really good job for us. We're excited to be able to get someone who had, she's been down there about a year. So, we think the skills and that experience she's had there is going to be real transferable to what we will need her to do, and we feel like we're real fortunate to be able to have her make that move from our time to full-time. And she's been looking for something along those lines, I think, for a little while. So, I think it's going to work out well for everybody just here this morning to get your approval on that.
Motion to approve of the, you have our?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Richard?
Yes. Good morning, guys.
Good morning, Richard.
Snyder Road is no longer gravel. We got it finished up this morning. Going to move, we's going to move to 200 South, but had some things located, waiting on that to get finished so we can reroute the water where it's supposed to be going. So, we just went back to Chipseeland. So, we're working down in the southern part of the county on 475 South today since we're down here, and we're going to work our way back up to cover the millings when we do 200 South and get done down here and finish up what we left off on 800 and up in that area.
You're taking care of the drainage problems along 200 South?
Yes.
I had constituent complainant having some water run off because where you lined the road that.
Yeah, we've, uh, we had an issue out there with a fella. He dammed up our ditch, and he was upset because the water was going down on him, but that's where we're supposed to win. But he dammed it up when we did. It was right a little bit before we got all them gulliwashers when we did, and it's rerouted the water going across the road. And there's been some people upset that lives out there because they was told that I was going to pave it. Well, that's what we was going to do, and we're still going to do, but we've got to get the water problem fixed. We won't do anything, or it's not even going to matter if we did it. So, we got a part-time guy mowing, another part-time. That's all he's going to do is mow, try to get us caught up on that. Our brush cutter's down. It seems like when we get a day where we can run it, something breaks. Other than that, that's about it on, I figured you guys eventually, Everton Road, I don't know what's going on down there.
They're working on it.
I know they're doing the driveways and stuff, so I see them doing that as far as anything else. It's about it. Warren knows more about that than I do. I forgot to bring it up because everyone's where you go to ask me.
Have you got that tank running now out there?
We need to run power to it yet. That's the only thing that left, but it's, I've been, we've been busy on trying to get the milling away, and we'll get it.
How close to being done with Chipseeland?
Nah.
Milestones? Are you two-thirds done?
Maybe, something like it.
A little over half.
But the problem, the thing we're having is when we lay the millings, we got to get them covered with chip. So, that's, it's been a busy summer.
Yeah, you don't want to, you don't want to get them rutted.
No.
Because you'll have to reshape it and everything.
Yeah, to be done. One thing good about Snyder, it's just down Warren, which, you know, Waterloo, that's your, Waterloo just moved to Snyder because it's Waterloo Millings. That's free material. We laid it out that first day when we first started, went as far as we could time-wise, and then came back the next day. By the time we got back the next day, they relayed the hook on to where we was at, it was like a rock. So, it's, it's really good material. The finer the better. So, if you guys get a chance, run it, just check it out. I've, I've seen you out there, so, to get a chance, and it's different. And.
What's hard to imagine is that road setting out on Snyder Road, you're actually driving on Waterloo's road, and they just picked it up and moved it. I think that's amazing.
Yep.
We're trying. It's just mother nature and all that.
I got a call from a gentleman, and I'm sorry, but I can't remember his name. He said he called and talked to Angie about it as well, down on Sains Road.
Sains.
Uh, can?
Um, it's plugged up.
Plugged up or something?
Got it yesterday. Uh, oh, I know, I can't remember his name. His wife drives the bookmobile.
Okay.
Thing, but we got, yeah, we got it yesterday.
You got, you got him taken care of?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Um, Warren, have you had time as far as drainage? Have you been out there to plowse and on Longwood or off of Long, by Longwood Bridge?
Uh, plumber?
Or plumber, not plowse. Plumber.
Rick Taylor was, when I was on vacation, Rick Taylor went out there and supposedly cleaned out the ditches and stuff like that. I haven't heard from him since then, so I don't know. I did talk to him. There was the, the ditch, the can had come off of, shoot, I'm blanking right now.
A net?
Yeah, it was plugged up. We unplugged that.
I noticed somebody had worked with a shovel out there.
Yeah.
But, but I wondered if we could even take it one step farther, maybe in the off-season, and reach over there, clean that out even deeper and maybe put some.
Riprap on it?
Riprap in there to hold that sediment back.
Okay.
Or something, because it's just going to settle. Settle back in.
I wish we could get in there and straighten up that creek, too.
And the creek, I mean.
We could get far as we can reach, but it's, um, yeah.
But I just wondered if we could really do a more permanent job.
Where we don't have to go back.
Maybe this fall or winter.
We can do that.
Where we don't have to be going back there after a hard rain to clean those cans out, because all the way around that S curve, there's several different cans, and they're all settled in.
Yeah, and I think two of them right there at the fence line, too.
Yes, and we're going to have to get with Annette or Andy Wilson to have, Andy's the tenant.
Yeah. Oh, he is?
Yeah.
That's, that's, I mean, we get, that's, we can't get it to grade all, but that hole, we can get them teeth right underneath and do that and.
And, and maybe he can take the fence loose long enough for us to work and do what we need to do, because it's all high tensile fence.
I didn't know Andy did, took care of, I'll talk to Andy, but.
Yeah, talk with Andy.
Okay.
On that, because he's the tenant. He forms it.
Okay.
And I'm sure he'll work with us on taking that fence loose, because it's, I know it's electrified, so you can't beat.
I'll let him do it first.
Yeah.
Other than that, unless you guys got something, that's, we're pretty small.
Thank you very much for what's going on.
Keep at it.
That's what we'll do until snow.
Tell, tell guys they're doing good till.
Yeah, they, the Chipseeland work is just tremendous.
It goes to their head, they're doing good now, so we'll just wait until we slow down, then I'll tell them.
That's it.
Tell them thanks a lot, Richard.
All right.
Chipseeland work is just tremendous. Top notch.
Jane, would you like to present Paul Freed's?
Yeah, I say Judge Freed had a 144 to present, but he's not able to make the meeting himself. It's to replace Sierra Urban that Judge Branstadter took, and he wanted to hire Cassie Rader is the name of the candidate that he had.
Is that an internal transfer, or is she a new, totally new?
I'm not sure. The name sounds familiar, so she, she could be either current or former.
Motion to approve Judge Freed's 144 request.
Second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
All right. One seat off.
Back again. I have here two change orders for the Everton Road, Waterloo Road paving project, so I'll pass them out. Because of the inclement weather, we've had June, July requesting six more days. The original completion date was July the 15th, and this would extend it to July 21st, which they were done on July 20th, substantially complete. So, I just need commissioners and order to assign that, approve that. They are still planning on doing some patching down on Everton Road. There's some bad areas, water, whatever is spraying underneath the road for about 50 feet. Milestone said they'd send their superintendent down this week. We'll look at it again, and then there's another place that needs patching on Everton Road. The driveways, the gravel driveways that was the hump entering or leaving the road has been taken care of. I talked to Milestone Friday about that, so. And then, change order two is for the increase and one decrease in the amounts. On the front page, the starred award project was 567,248 dollars and 50 cents, and with this, change order overruns and one decrease of 44,141 dollars and 21 cents. The increase in millings on Waterloo Road is because I had the wrong data for the width of Waterloo Road. Next time I'll measure, so, relying on something on paper. And we were fairly close, 57 tons on the asphalt and, and close on the tack amount. And Everton Road was fairly close, just 849 dollars increase for the milling. The big overrun was the surface amount on Everton Road, which is 31,689 dollars, 68 cents. And basically, that was from 50 West to Everton because of the poor subbase underneath. They wedged it first, and so it's got a extra thick surface on that road. So, still, the total amount, 611,000, is under the amount that we had granted. It was a 50%, 50% match, and we got 328,000 from the state, so.
Warren, it, once I look at these bad spots on Everton Road and determine the fix for them, could there be more overrun?
Yeah, it'd be more overrun.
To fix those problems?
Yeah. They were talking about we paid for it by asphalt materials, increased that amount, and they would take the labor cost, but it would be just, just that amount of materials that they used. And how thick that is, I don't know. We have to, it's like a little volcano coming up out of the roof. You can step on it and it's squishy for that section of room, so.
Madam President, I'd make a motion then to the change order that extended the time that he, Warren presented first. I'd make a motion that we approve that and sign that, and I would make a motion that we table the change order on materials, the cost, increase, overruns, pending the warranty work on Everton Road, so that we could do them all at the same time, book them at the same time.
Okay. I'll submit a claim for 90% that you would approve today, so that would leave about $60,000, the retainage.
Well, we're keeping the retainage of that.
Yeah.
Until, until that's done.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess all I'm saying is let's do, let's do all the change at one time for this end, what, what they find out they need to do there.
Okay. Well, then I'll probably submit a claim for September 5th meeting, and then you could sign the change order then.
Yes.
Will we, will they?
They should have it done by then. They was talking about this week.
Okay. I didn't know whether they'd had, had to move on to another project, and they'll be back to do the warranty work, or?
Well, they went on, and they've been working in the city with curbs and ramps and sidewalks, and they told me Friday they'd be here this week on the patching, whether its schedule is. They may be coming down to do more work for City of Connersville.
Okay.
The paving, so. That's probably what I'll do, is I'll tell them that we'll figure the change order two when it's done and get all of it at once.
And approve, yeah.
But I thought it'd be a good idea to know what's, what's going on.
Yeah. Second one motion. Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Make a motion to approve the change order for the time.
And table.
Table the one for the cash until we have a total with the changes for Everton Road. Who made the motion?
I did. I second it.
Okay. Then move and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
That's all I have, unless you have some questions.
No.
Thank you, Warren.
Mr. Brady, your turn.
Morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Bill.
Hi. I have one thing here, the cleaning of the ductworks at the jail. I've got both bids in. I've been battling back and forth with these two companies, which is Johnson Controls and North Mechanicals, and I've got them both down. We started out about 10,000 bucks, so I've got them both down to, North Mechanicals is 6,139, and Johnson's come in at 5,792.
5,001?
792. So, Johnson's is a low bid, and I need approval to get this, get this started, because we need to get, we need to get on it right away.
I'll move to approve the, they from Johnson Controls. Second.
Any discussion?
Again, where, where do we need to make adjustments to the budget to cover it?
I, I don't know. I'll have to get with, get with Jane and later and see where we can.
Because if we have to do Q and C, we'll have to do an additional, won't we, Jane?
Yes.
And the soonest we could do that is?
September.
Uh, I don't think we could do it September. Now, I think the deadline's already passed for advertising.
Mike can still squeeze it in.
Okay.
10 days.
So, we need to do that.
This is going to take some time for them to do it anyway, so.
Today. I mean, we need to make that decision. You and Jane or.
Oh, okay.
Or someone needs to make that decision today.
Okay.
Where to take that from.
Okay.
So, we have to advertise. I don't want to be like Mirrorworks and we're right down to.
Yeah, get down to where they're done and, yeah, I understand. Okay.
North was 61.
That's all.
North was 6139.
Aye.
Thank you.
Three ayes.
Thank you for that negotiating.
Thank you. I, that's what I like.
I mean, I hope they don't cut us short.
No, no, no. It was apple to apple on work, and I'm going to oversee it, so it's apple to apple on work and what they're going to do, and I'll be right there when they're doing it, so.
Okay. Get with you after we. Jane may be here just a minute.
Thank you.
Discussion. Director.
Director Gellington?
I have just come to ask the commissioners permission to hire two part-timers. They are both employed full-time elsewhere as part-timers. They've worked for us before. There's no expense to us hiring them because they're already IDAC certified, NCIC, the EMD training certifications we have. Only thing we'll have to do is give them a refresher on the console, and because we've got one dispatcher that's going on FM LA the latter part of this month, she'll be off at least for two weeks because her husband's having surgery.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
How many part-timers will be in the pool then?
I believe that'll put us up to eight.
Eight?
Yep. And most of them, most of the other part-timers all have full-time jobs. I think we've got two that, the part, they only work part-time for us, and then they don't have another job, but the rest of them all have full-time jobs elsewhere, and then they part-time dispatch part-time.
Very good.
Are we still on for Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Michael's not here.
No. He's busy installing equipment from the state at the judge's office.
Okay. Is that something, new phone lines, or is that something that needs to be?
No, I'm sorry, that was left on there from last time.
Okay.
We took care of that.
Okay. Are there any other department heads that have anything to say? Is there any mail? Old Business?
I guess it, Paul, under Old Business, I wanted to kind of talk about the hiring, hiring process for our new 911 director. We had talked about the possibility of starting the merging of EMA and, and the 911 department eventually down the road. A slow process of merging, and we had talked about the director also serving as, of 911, also serving as a EMA deputy director, and that, that is a twofold. Hopefully, then we won't have a dead spot if Adrian decides that, comes in one day, decides that he wants to retire and walks out, we won't have a downlog of uneducation there, and, and we'll be able to have a person that can possibly step right into that position. And, so, I put together, I, with, with the two job descriptions of deputy director and the 911 director for us to look at. There was already a job description drawn, drawn up for the deputy director, EMA director, and twofold, I'm, we're looking at this as, as a possible help with funding. Our EMA, our, our state and feds are gracious enough to reimburse half the salaries of our EMA department, and that's one of those so-called mandates that does have some funding in it. Some, doesn't it, Adrian?
Some.
So, what we wanted to do, we talked about helping our budget.
For 911.
For 911 by joining those departments. We can, we can put three, correct me if I'm wrong, Adrian, EMA allows three people under that umbrella of federal reimbursement on 50% of their salaries. So, we could, we could utilize two more people from our 911 department to help out with our EMA and, and as well. My suggestion would be eventually we would appoint maybe one of our supervisors in 911 to a position of supervisor slash operations secretary as well down the road. And we currently already have that job description on file and approved with our county commissioners and council, and that's, those right there. I think I get to write ones. So, it would be my suggestion that we not only advertise for a 911 director, but we would advertise for a 911 director slash deputy EMA director when we advertise. It would be my suggestion, we were, we have in the past, our 911 advisory board has done the initial interviewing for that position, and then made recommendations to the commissioners for their final decision. I would suggest that we do that again as well. Ask our advisory board to do the interviewing. I guess I would recommend that we ask them to narrow it down to two. I guess I would recommend that we ask them to narrow it down to two candidates and then let, present those to the commissioners for, for final choice. I guess, I'm not sure that this is a realistic goal, but I guess I would like to shoot for maybe October 1st, have a new 911 permanent director in place. It may not be a realistic goal, but.
Would you like to make a motion to that? Okay.
Okay. I would make a motion that our new 911 director that we hire will also qualify and be named as our deputy director of EMA. And that we ask our 911 advisory board to do the initial interviewing and ask them to bring us two recommendations, at least two recommendations, final recommendations. And then we'll pick from, from that. I would shoot for a goal of October 1st to accomplish that.
So we need to advertise that right away?
I would, I, I think, I don't know that I'd go any farther than our local newspaper as far as official ads, but we could do possibly social media and advertisement and social media as well. Jane, you were talking about, something about the handbook talks about internal?
Yeah, the handbook says that we advertise in-house for a week before we present it to the public.
Okay.
Here. EMA.
Emergency management agency. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Which we can send it, just send an email countywide, that's typically how we do that, post it on the bulletin board. Michael Keane puts it on the county's website.
Okay. All right.
And it's really not emergency management anymore. Adrian keeps reminding me, it's Homeland Security.
Well, I mean, why does that EMA hat all the time?
I'm confused.
Somebody keep a new one. He can't put Homeland Security in trouble.
Don't have the budget for it.
Yeah, there you go.
He hasn't written a grant to get him a grant.
Is that what it is?
Then let me ask you this, Adrian.
Yes.
And I apologize if I'm not titling it correctly, but should this read Deputy Director of Homeland Security? Or is it still deputy as, as the job description has written?
We need to make an official change of name.
Okay.
Make that a motion right now if you like.
Well, we've already got one on the floor, but.
Okay.
But yeah, I would make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Was, was your intentions to eventually hire two people? Gary, when you was explaining to that, you talked about one to, as a director of 911, then also assistant to at present time Adrian and, and could step in and rotate if Adrian is out or if down the road retires and we get somebody else. And then you mentioned something about a second person that the state would pay half that salary for?
You're, right. And that is a current employee that's already there. We, we have two superv, I think we have two supervisors presently in the 911. And we could eventually add to their.
Convert them over to, add that position to them or change their.
Add, add their job, add it to their job target.
As an assistant director with both, that's the director of 911 and assistant to Adrian or so to speak, and then the other person also, would they both be qualified to do Adrian's job if it come necessary? I mean, are they both going to get the training?
You'll have to ask him as far as the operations secretary.
The operations secretary, I think, what Gary and I talked about, we're trying to develop a program here and.
Would you like to come up to the speaker?
Put me up to the side. I didn't want to do this. We're trying to develop a program that, you know, I'm going to leave at some point here. We talked last night, to get that other person ready, there is a list of requirements at the state, a lot of training and education they have to have. Realistically, it'll be a year before they can get to the point we can start to see any money back. And then there are the other side items. I put a deadline, two years, to get that done. And then, you know, I'd look at retirement. We're looking at a stair step to kind of get people ready, that we have a transition, that the deputy director will be ready to slide into the director's spot, that administrative support will slide into the deputy director and then so on. So you've got a chain reaction going on time. You've got people who are qualified and people who are getting qualified. And then all while that's going.
We're trying to get that going on in several departments right now.
It is and it's not easy. And thank you, Gary, you know, for everything you're doing. We're overdue on that. One of the things we talked about was what's going on in Washington. There are a lot of department heads that have not been assigned that are slowing things down. So this is a right time to do this. It's a good thing to do.
But to answer your question, Marion, the deputy director will most definitely be trained to the point where if Adrian's not here, he'll, he or she will step right in.
I, I kind of understood that part of it, Gary, but you had mentioned a third person, you know, and I.
And, and that's more of a, the operations secretary is more of an executive administrative assistant or position. It's more of a, they're going to do the paperwork, you know.
They're not going to receive the same training at the?
Probably not.
Well, no.
Eventually, if they step, if they step, if that person steps into the deputy director's position eventually, then, yeah, they would receive that training.
Yeah. Marion, there, there are a lot of things that it may be something that on someone's literature and grammar skills, they might go, you know, do a little college stuff because there's a lot of writing and I learned many years ago, state has three words that you better be correct on, shall, should, and may. You put those in the wrong place and you got a war.
It doesn't work.
You got a war you're in, but that is a living document and they have to know how to deal with that.
Adrian and I discussed last night, went over things and, and so I was a little more clear where the direction that we had to go to, to cross our Ts and dot our Is with all this. And real, realistically, we're probably the budget year 19 before we receive extra funds or reimbursements on this. The time they get the training, because they operate on a budget year of July 1st to June 30th, we operate on a budget year of January 1st to December 31st. So it's, that's a law in it.
Yeah.
And plus the training, they have to have so much training before the state and feds will reimburse.
And that's another issue that we're going by their training calendar. There's some things they can do online, but their training calendar, when is it offered? Where is it offered? We're at their mercy for that.
And, and like Adrian and I was talking last night, who knows who's going to apply? We may get a, a Homeland Security person that applies for the 911 position. They may already be trained. And we can receive that money a lot sooner.
And then you have the 911 side.
And then we have the 911 training side.
But it's a process.
Yeah. So.
If we don't start, we're never going to get it done.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we need that. We need it for a long time.
I mean, hopefully at one point in time, at some point in time, both departments totally fall under the same umbrella. That is our goal, that, that both departments become one instead of two departments.
It's better for everybody. It's much better.
It, it just makes, to most of us that have talked about it, it makes the most sense for such a small community and small county, those two departments being one department instead of two makes, makes more, much more sense.
And there are quite a few around the state that are already there. Wayne County, Randolph County, Delaware County are that way now. And there's several, I think Fort Wayne is that way and a few others.
So this is, as Adrian and I talked last night, it's, we're going to take baby steps to make sure that we do all this hopefully correctly, as correctly as possible. And it'll help, help our 911 budget shortfalls that we have been experiencing and still have the qualified personnel that we need over there.
And somebody else can get that for you and phone call.
Yeah. Yeah. So did we vote?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded and up three ayes, right? Jane? That was all, it was all approved, right?
The 911, yes.
Advertise for that position.
I must have given somebody.
Is there any other old business?
I don't think I have anything else.
Is there any new business?
Not like Brad.
Patron concerns?
Do you need to direct, they saw a lot of this thing to clean up the river.
We need to make a motion for the Soil and Water Conservation District for us to sponsor them or for us to ask them to clean the river up for us.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I don't know.
All in favor say aye. It's, it's a little matter of housekeeping about liability insurance and it comes under, if the county has designated them as our person to do that, why, it comes under our county liability insurance and saves, saves us some money in the county because they are a county agency. All right. I thank you very much. Thanks very much, David, for reminding me of that period. Would you like to announce when the cleanup is?
I suggest you direct us to do it on August 19th. This coming summer.
Okay. We would like for the Soil and Water Conservation District to be in charge of handling the cleanup of the Whitewater River on Saturday, August 19th.
8:00 AM.
Okay. Down Robinson's campground, meet at 8:00 AM. Thank you. Appreciate them getting that job done for us. The river's one of our very good assets and we certainly want to take care of it. Any other patron concerns? I'd like a thick motion for approval of claims and payroll.
I'll move to approve claims and payroll.
Can we hold off on that? I need to talk to Terry about one, one call.
Sure.
Can we recess just for a few minutes?
We're going to recess. He needs to talk to Terry about one of our claims. We recess for five minutes. Call this meeting back to order.
I'd make a motion that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Oh, and payroll.
And payroll. Thank you. Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. How about a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Can't get no better than that. Adjourn. Or second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Four ayes. Thank.